Thank you. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for the Planning Commission. Today's Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. The land that we know as Squim was once inhabited solely by first peoples known as the Sklalum people, represented by the three tribal governments, Lower Elawaklalum, Jefferson, I'm sorry, Jamestown-Sklalum, and Port Gamble-Sklalum. We serve as stewards of the land within the city of Squim with the same care and consideration the Sklalum-Klalum tribes has and continues to provide. This acknowledgement is a respect to the Sklalum people and their history. The Planning Commission serves as an advisory body to the City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide guidance and direction for Squim's future growth through continued review and improvement to Squim's comprehensive plan, zoning code, shoreline management, environmental protection, and related land use documents. The Planning Commission will have all of the powers to perform each and all of the duties specified by Chapter 35A.63 RCW as amended and set forth or amended by ordinance. At this time, we're going to take roll call. We have Commissioner Carter, who is on an excused absence, as well as Commissioner Cummings, who's on an excused absence, and we have received a resignation for Commissioner Mahalik. So, we've got the Fab Four here today. So Emily, will you please do roll call?
Absolutely. Commissioner Coontz.
Present.
Commissioner Fane.
Present.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Present.
Commissioner Lee Bieber.
Here.
All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Approval of the minutes. At this time, we are going to look at approving the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of April 2nd, 2024. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? And are there any corrections or comments? Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve?
To approve.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, minutes stand approved as written. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. This is a general public comment. We have a pretty big agenda today, but there's not any public comment connected to those items specifically in the agenda. So this is, if somebody wanted to make public comment, this is the time to do so. General public comment will be heard at this time. Each person is limited to three minutes. For those wishing to speak on the public hearing topics, please hold those comments till that portion of the meeting, which is not applicable today. So that being said, is there anybody that would like to provide public comment at this time? Okay. Emily, is there anybody? Oh, yes. Doug, if you could please sign in.
I've got it.
I've got it, okay.
I was looking, Doug. Is it white?
No, this is the time for you to speak if you'd like to. You're welcome.
She goes about a master floor.
And Doug, would you mind turning your microphone on when you speak?
How's that? All right. Hopefully, the audience can see the little hash marks. Those are the overlays, and that's what I want to refer to. Excuse my allergies. Okay, this lays out the overlays that are planned for Squim. Just have a few questions and concerns that maybe can be answered during the presentation. Spoken to other people. And basically, if, you can't see, right in there, you've got Heritage Hendrickson. You come down here, and that is, I lost my little red thing. There it is. Juniper, Spruce West, Spruce East, West Alder. Where is it? Oh, Lavender Meadows is up there. Clausen Cove, and down here is Hidden Valley. Sorry about that, I got away from the mic. Okay. The question for this whole thing is, and I don't have a problem, you could overlay the whole city if it were to protect homes. I'm for that. The questions I have is what I see as inconsistencies. You've got Heritage and Hendrickson, and all these firsts that I mentioned, all these that are hash marked here are basically 100% tenant-owned homes who pay leases on the land that their home sits on, which is the purpose of the overlay to help protect those homes, so you can't repurpose the land, put everybody on the street. The inconsistencies I see is, one of them is, I think it's on this map, it was on the one I saw, right in there somewhere, is a Squim West motel with many rented manufactured homes. And there's another one, I think, right in there, that is Oasis. And there's another one, where is it? I think right in there. I think my pointer's dying on me. That is, thank you, that is the Bayview, aka Idle Wheels. These are mixed. They are both tenant-owned and park-owned homes, and Idle Wheels is, also got several RV spaces. Again, I don't have any problem with that. If you can save homes, I'm all for it. What I don't understand is how come Sunnyside is not included in this? It's at Fourth and Prairie, and it has 16 homes, both tenant-owned and park-owned. So that's one of the things I see. And you've also got, where there's P&amp;L Resorts somewhere over here, I can't tell from here, maybe you can see it there, Emily, but P&amp;L is aka Gilgal RV Park. Well, it's strictly an RV park. They rent their spaces by day, by week, or month. I don't understand really why that would be included, but if it is included, how come the RV park at John Wayne Marina is not included? It's an RV park, same way. And then, I guess, last but not least, is up north there, right in there, I think it is, would be Clausen Cove. I don't know all the facts and figures on co-ops, but it is a co-op. They own their land, so I don't understand the reason for the overlay there. Like, I've got figures and stuff, but no sense in going into them, it doesn't really matter. That's kind of the gist of what I'm saying. I see some inconsistencies, and I don't understand, and I would love to be able to understand, and I'm wide open to explanation. I have been attacked. And I didn't even do it. Should I now have all the pins that I need? Should I happen to need a pin? Just FYI, there's a reason for all this, of course, that, and maybe it will help you guys understand, which I'm sure you already do, but as an example, back in 2018, College Place, which is a suburb of Walla Walla, if I'm not mistaken, they removed their mobile home park zone and changed it to a multifamily residential zone. They thought this would help create more affordable housing. Well, lo and behold, somebody comes up and goes, quote, "It's come to the city's attention that it is possible that because of the change of the zoning to multifamily residential, we may have inadvertently created a situation where manufactured home parks are threatened with a possibility of redevelopment," which is what we're trying to protect here. So, in November 23rd, 2021, they voted unanimously to reverse that pre-2018 zoning change and put it back. So they did realize it did matter. So you guys aren't working for nothing. It does matter. It makes a big difference. I don't know if you were around at the time, but I mentioned the train's coming. It's here. I don't know if you know about it, be glad to talk to you and explain it, but it's here. You can talk to some people here tonight if you want, and they'll tell you, they've already been hit with that train. So anyway, that's kind of, just for the heck of it, and I just happen to have one of these. The first one to frowned upon, this is Draft 2 of an additional SMC 1863. It's the same, it basically mirrors Bothell Washington's SMC, which is 12 dot 14 dot 100, I believe. Oh, 12 four 100, thank you. You got that one. So it pretty well mirrors it, and I think every little thing we can do for protection would come in handy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Emily, what he gave you, will you make sure that that's available?
I was just going to say I'll email it out after this.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Is there anybody else that would like to provide public comment at this time? Okay, and do we have anybody online that would like to provide public comment?
It looks like we do have one person. I'm not sure if they want to provide comment or not, but I gave them permission to talk, so if they'd like to talk, Jackie, the floor is yours.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close public comment at this time. I did have a question, that map that you put up, is that available when we get into discussion?
That was part of the packet, yes.
Okay, awesome, thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to general business, and the first thing up is interim control ordinance regarding Chapter 17.321110. Sarah, hello?
Hello. Hello, Commissioners, nice to see everyone. The interim control ordinance and the two points of access is really, as you know, a DCD function, but we're all joining forces to support the department until we get a new director. So, for the record, Sarah Benozdol, outgoing Public Works Director, and this evening, I'm bringing you an item that you've previously seen, but that you requested additional information on, so that's what we're bringing forward to you tonight. And it does, it is in regard to the interim controls and how many points of access should be required. So our transportation consultant that's preparing the transportation master plan prepared this memo for you about what the city might adopt in terms of a connectivity policy, and then was brought to Planning Commission on April 2nd, and you requested additional analysis in terms of using the trip-generated data as a basis of determination for how many points of connectivity should be required, instead of just a parcel number. And the new information begins on page eight, and if you had a chance to review it, basically, a single-family home generates not quite one peak-hour trip. Yeah, it's generated by the Institution of Transportation Engineers, and it's almost one peak-hour trip. And what they've done, so that mirrors quite nicely the existing interim controls, that says over 30 lots is 30 peak-hour trips, and so that's about the same. But then what they've done is add the potential for two accessory dwelling units on each one of those parcels, applied the peak-hour trip rate for those, and now you've got a total of potentially 2.08 peak-hour trips for a 30 parcel subdivision. So now you could be generating 60 peak-hour trips. So they've provided a suggestion that certainly 14 or fewer parcels are going to generate less than 30 peak-hour trips, and so they would only need one access point between 15 and 29, one or potentially two, it just depends. And then certainly 30 or more, you would need two access points. But they are recommending putting the onus on the developer to do a traffic analysis to say how many peak-hour trips would be generated, and that it wouldn't have an adverse impact to circulation. So that's some additional analysis, and basically, we're just asking for feedback as staff as we move forward in the coming months to develop this connectivity policy, looking to hear what the Planning Commission thinks about this analysis and whether we should incorporate it into our policy or not.
Okay, thank you. Is there any Commissioners that would like to speak at this time?
Yes, one comment. It would seem, the subdivision I'm in, fair weather, our lots are just 45 by 90 feet, with, at the most, of 15 feet on one side and five feet on another. And there's no possibility of putting an ADU in subdivisions like that. So that's where it's residential, eight per acre, more or less. And so there'd be a lot of these subdivisions where there's not going to be a possibility for a lot of ADUs, and it would seem to be that it would be kind of a, an exception rather than the rule for each unit. So that, the onus is on the developer to estimate possible ADU development. Seems fair. Each development may be a different case.
Sure.
Thank you.
And lot size should be a factor in that analysis, right?
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Yeah, I agree with Alex. I mean, I think it should be on the developer.
Uh huh. And do you like the idea of using the peak-hour trips as a basis of determination?
Yeah, I do. How about?
I agree.
Yeah. Because they, you know, a lot of that, I mean, yeah, with the ADUs, I mean, not all developments are going to have ADUs, but then some of them might be designed, you know, to have, to, you know, to make room for them or to have them. So I think you guys are in the right direction.
Okay.
Larry?
So, I guess, we're going to rely upon the developer. Are we going to just assume that if it has, if each lot has the ability to add two ADUs, are we going to just double-check them on their estimate?
We would certainly review the analysis to see that it's actually accurate and feasible, or, yes.
Okay. Then I agree that, I think we have to plan for that, given the way the world's changing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, because I see a lot more multi-generational living situations, you know, as housing becomes, you know, more expensive, and, so, yeah, I think, I like what you guys presented.
Okay.
Dennis, did you have anything?
Only to agree with the comments that have already been made. I think ADUs are a very, a strong potential to provide affordable housing. Again, I think it would be up to the developer to have the traffic engineer, have the traffic study address what lots in the proposed subdivision would be developable, for how many dwelling units would be proposed.
To identify the maximum potential.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, what the potential would be, because, you know, like Alex said, you know, there's not really any potential in his subdivision, you know, so that would, it would kind of be a moot point, but, you know, in some of the other subdivisions that are being developed, or, I mean, I don't know if there's any right now, but I'm just saying in the future, it could be that there is more of an option. So, yeah. Anyway, I'm talking in circles now, so.
Yeah. Well, we will certainly incorporate this into staff's analysis, and moving forward over the next few months, we'll be bringing this back to you. I believe it has to be actually adopted by October 23rd. We did extend the interim control, but that's our deadline. So hopefully, in the next few months, you'll hear more from us.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Alex.
One more thing came to mind from experience in my HOA. When the whole development was conceived, it was given CCNRs, and most subdivisions come with kind of a template CCNR for the HOA for its governance, and probably built into a lot of that boilerplate is prohibitions against ADUs. And so going forward, does the city have any influence or whatever in those template CCNRs that are kind of imposed on new developments to have the option for ADUs remaining open for those people?
You always ask me hard questions, Alex. I think that's probably, I don't know if that's something that a DCD director could answer, or maybe even legal.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. Oh, here's Kim.
Yeah. Let me turn the video on. Hey, everybody. The answer to your question, Commissioner, is that the CCNRs are a private agreement that is, that is made often with HOAs, and in general, the governing rule for CCNRs is that they cannot adopt rules that are less strict than the adopted code, but can adopt rules that are more strict. So for example, if the setback, if the side setback on your property is 10 feet, they can't come in and say that you, that the side setback is eight feet or five feet, because that inherently is operating against the code in a way that offers more leniency than would otherwise be allowed by the code.
Okay, thank you. Did that, did that help, Alex?
Um, not, uh...
So, I think that a more direct answer is, staff can't review that and suggest, staff can't review the CCNRs and suggest that certain rules, you know, that are governed at the private civil level are not allowed to be adopted if they're met agreeably by everybody on the CCNR's board. I've read CCNRs in Squim before that govern that anything larger than a half-ton truck can't be parked inside the subdivision, and so there's any wealth of rules that can be adopted by the CCNRs that are not governed by staff.
Yes, correct, and I remain concerned that developers, but the, seem to be the ones that come up with the CCNRs, and they have, they're on the board of the HOA until it's all sold out, at least one member, and there's not, they're extremely restrictive, and so we could talk about all these great possibilities for ADUs solving the homeless and housing crunch, and yet, in reality, it may not be feasible with the rules that most new homes are coming under. And also, as we're kind of estimating here, how many lots may have ADUs in the future? Does the city have an idea about how many are ADUs that are inhabited in the city now, per residential lot?
Currently?
Currently?
That exist currently?
Yes, yes.
I don't know that number. I'm not sure if we actually keep that number. I know that when we made the ADU a possibility, we did not receive hardly any applications for it. So I'm, I would be spitting, you know, just throwing whatever at the wall, but I would say there's probably not that many.
Yeah, we might have one out of 100, or one out of 200.
So I can speak to that from a permitting perspective?
Thank you.
So, last year, I want to say maybe five were permitted, but unpermitted, of course, we have no idea unless we get a complaint, like a noise complaint or something like that, and then code compliance will go investigate. But, yeah, I think I got maybe five last year, and I know of one stick, but one so far this year, so.
Okay.
A few conversions, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have one more question for staff. And pardon my newness, but to the Squim Municipal Code, but is there still a provision that allows staff to provide for non-motorized connectivity through a subdivision that falls below the threshold, whatever that may be, for pedestrians, bicycles? If there's a connection adjacent to a subdivision that falls below the two vehicular points of access, is there still an opportunity for staff to get an easement to connect to a trail system?
Well, I know in this memo, there's a provision that if you can't meet the connectivity standards or the required maximum length of blocks and things like that, that you're required to provide the pedestrian or bicycle access instead. I'm not aware of anything that actually prohibits that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, we do, I'm sorry, we do require, like, in lieu of frontage improvements, if you don't want to improve the public street in front of your development, you can provide a pedestrian bicycle access through the developments instead of frontage improvements?
In some other location, other than adjacent to the street? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, did you get what you needed?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Julianne, I might suggest that, Emily, if any of these questions aren't answerable, because we don't have a director here, and we're still kind of learning how to support the Commission, if you could take some notes, and feel welcome to ask us to get back to you with that, and we would be happy to. I get that we don't always have the answer right at the time, but we should be, I'm comfortable being accountable to come back with the answer. So please let us know what you'd like to hear back on, and we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Was there anything that was brought up just now that any of the Commissioners would like follow-up on? No? Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to the update moratorium on applications and permits, redevelopment of mobile home and manufactured home parks. Get my cursor there. And I believe that this is Kim. Okay. Thank you for joining us, Kim.
Oh, of course, I'm here, Commissioner. Is everybody able to see the screen that I'm sharing?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, so we're here again tonight. It's been about six weeks since we were in front of this Commission, and we had a number of tasks ahead of us to be able to continue implementing solutions for the moratorium on mobile home and manufactured home parks. Many of those tasks have been crossed off of the list that you see in front of you now. We are left with one last, but very important item, to be able to round out the effort that staff has made for this moratorium, and that is formalizing amendments to Squim's municipal code, to be able to adopt a zoning code. What that has entailed is, or a zone overlay, what that has entailed has been drafting of a new, a new chapter in Squim's municipal code, and then revisions made to other ancillary code. We're at an important part in the process this evening, and I'll note, I guess, two important noteworthy things for... Uh, and I'll note, I guess, two important noteworthy things for this commission. One is that previously we had contemplated and recommended to this commission that we might repeal chapter 1862 of the Squim Municipal Code. Um, and that governs, um, right now, mobile home park citing and development regulations and use standards. And we thought at the time, um, oh, you know, it might make sense to repeal these. That way we can just repeal this entire chapter. That way we can just start from scratch and write a whole new chapter with a fresh perspective. And in discussing it more at the staff level, we recognized that doing so would probably be errant for, for the simple fact that it would require us to carry out more activity right now than has been authorized via the moratorium, um, that was, um, authorized by the city council. City Council's moratorium, the ordinance that's been passed for this, for this agenda item is specific to provisions that would protect, um, the preservation of mobile home parks and manufactured home parks that exist today in Squim. It does not extend into things like citing of new parks or governing the development or expansion of those existing parks. And so to be able to, to ensure that we're working within the authorization that we've been given via ordinance from city council, we thought instead what makes better sense is to rely on the existing code 1862 for matters related to, um, you know, the citing of new mobile home parks, the expansion of existing ones and, and allow that to remain as is, with the exception of removing the definitions subsection, which is in your packets tonight. And allowing definitions relevant to the matter in chapter 1808 of Squim's municipal code where all other definitions live in title 18. And instead adopt, prepare and adopt, um, SMC 1863, which is a new chapter that we've crafted for specifically for the preservation of mobile home parks. I understand that Doug is here tonight and brought some, um, recommendations and certainly take a look at that, um, when it's able to be provided to me. And so what has occurred so far, um, since the last time that we saw this commission in April was 1863 has been drafted. It's in your packets. Changes have been made, um, to ancillary code provisions in 1808, 1820, 1816, and 1862. Those are all in your packet. And the second very important thing that we need to bring to this commission tonight is an ask for guidance from the commission on how strict you hope for 1820 to reflect uses that are allowed in the mobile home park zone overlay that we've proposed. I don't know if now is a good opportunity to show or if it would be beneficial. I can pull up the map that we've created, but the map, um, that, uh, that was pulled up earlier, um, indicates what, uh, where we intend to be able to apply the zone overlay. It just has hatch marks that apply over all of the existing mobile home parks. I took down, um, Doug comments here that Sunnyside is errantly not included and we should make a revision to the map to include that. And again, I'll make a note that, um, RV parks that are designed specifically exclusively to serve RVs are not a component of the moratorium and are not an, an element of the ordinance that's been authorized by city council for this activity. So it's not, it's not a matter to be discussed as a part of this moratorium. What we do need to understand from planning commission tonight is what guidance it has for staff with regard to the severability that they want to see enacted in 1820 for uses that are allowed in the mobile home park overlay zone. Uh, the reason that this is important is that, as we've described before, in instances where there is a conflict between the zone overlay and the underlying zone, uh, the conflict weighs in favor of the zone overlay. And so 1820 is the, is Squim's code that governs use to standards allowed in every zone within the city and within all zone overlays. And, um, and so 182160 would be a new subsection within that chapter. It's in your packets as a kind of a blank template right now that would house the uses that are allowed within the zone overlay. This is important because, uh, there are a number of different zones that currently house existing manufactured and mobile home parks in Squim. And so this, um, this new section of 1820 governing the zone overlay could very exclusively say that the only use that's allowed in mobile home park, in the mobile home park overlay zone. Or it could defer to the uses that are allowed right now in 1862, which expand a bit, a bit beyond that, like accessory structures that are accessory to a mobile home park or a housing unit or dwelling unit for, um, you know, a manager of, of a mobile home park. So it could be very restrictive like that. Um, in which case, where the mobile home park overlay zone, uh, conflicts with the uses that are allowed in the underlying zone, uh, the use that is allowed to be, um, carried out on the site would fall to the zone overlay, which would be extremely restrictive and allow only for mobile home parks. That could be what, what is done. It could also be that this commission gives guidance that the mobile home, um, park overlay zone allows, just defers to the underlying zone for uses that are allowed. And that would mean that there would be no conflict between the zone overlay and the, and the underlying zone. All of the uses that exist today, non-conforming or not, could remain as long as the non-conformity is not expanded upon. Any underlying, um, you know, zone, allowed uses within the zone would still be in effect and valid and would not be in conflict with the overlay. That is something that is less strict of an approach and regards more of the extensive allowed uses within the, within the zone of all, uh, properties that are presently, uh, developed with mobile home parks. Um, and it shouldn't be met with concern if that, if that is appetizing to this planning commission, it shouldn't be met as something with concern as though that, that, as though that provides no protections for the preservation of mobile home parks. Because here again, as we've described many times, there are, there's such a wealth of state law that's been recently enacted in Washington that goes to be able to provide tremendous protections and resources for mobile home park tenants and owners. Um, and so those are very much still present, um, regardless of the decision tonight that goes to add to much of the protection that's in place for existing mobile home parks. So that is the effort tonight that we have for this planning commission is to be able to gauge the severity with which, uh, you believe the mobile home park overlay zone should govern land use allowed.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I, I have a question for clarification. When you were talking about, um, uses outside of the overlay. And so I was trying to think of what that would kind of, um, incorporate. And I know that there's one, one place in Squim where they, and it's on, it's just a couple of blocks down on Cedar Street where they have, um, you know, some mobile homes and then also right in that area is a building that's existed there for a long time. And there's a little, um, hair shop, like a hairstylist in there. So are you, I guess what I'm wondering is, is if, if we had the overlay, but still allowed other uses within those zones, if it's not real restrictive, then those type of things could stay in place?
Absolutely, yeah. There's nothing that's going to be decided by this commission tonight. That's going to remove state governed, non-conforming use rights.
Okay, so, but if we made it really restrictive, then how would that look?
You still can't, you still can't come in and bulldoze the hair shop. The hair shop is still an existing conceivably legal structure, um, that's been established. It's still subject to non-conforming rights.
Okay, so what would the, what would the? I just, I'm just need a little bit, um, of help, uh, walking me through this. So, so we had, and I know that there's a lot of different zones that, um, you know, mobile homes are in. And so we put the overlay, um, on the zone. And then how does that look if we don't do, if we don't do any kind of, you know, real restrictive? The, the mobile home park is, what, what does it get deferred to if somebody comes in and wants to do something? Does it get deferred to the overlay? Or does it get deferred to the zoning?
Yeah, so the overlay controls in instances where there's conflict between the two. So if there is, if there is no conflict, then there's really nothing to defer to because there's consistent representation. But if the, if the overlay were to say, if they, let's just imagine that this is the downtown zone. The downtown zone does have a couple of, um, parcels that are developed, um, with mobile home parks. And those allow for things like personal and professional services, like, like the hair shop or, um, you know, certain, you know, commercial businesses and enterprises and things like that. Um, and so if something, if a mobile home park right now is existing in that zone and the mobile home park overlay, um, is really restrictive and says that the only thing that can be developed here are mobile home parks, then if somebody conceivably were to come along and attempt to sell that land and then repurpose it, the instruction would be this isn't a zone overlay that has restrictive uses, um, allowed, which are limited only to X mobile home parks, accessory structures with mobile home parks, dwelling units for, um, you know, management of the mobile home park. You know, fill in the blank.
Okay.
In which case that, that person who wants to be able to repurpose the land would be told, you know, th- this is subject, there, there is conflict between the zone overlay and the underlying zone, and that means you can't put in a hair shop. You have to keep this as a mobile home park.
Okay, so, so let's say that, you know, whoever owns the hair shop decides she wants to retire. And, or he, whoever it is, and they sell the building. And, um, the next owner would like to repurpose it for something that's allowed within that zone. If there's no, so can they do that? Or does it have to now become redeveloped into like, uh, you know, part of the mobile home?
No, no, and this is, and this is where it's important that the, um, overlay zone encompasses only the parcels that are developed with mobile home parks. It's that, you know, the, the mobile home park and the hair shop might both be a part of the downtown zone, but only the mobile home park is, is subject to the overlay. The hair shop still is part of the overlay, so it's still subject to just its normal zoning.
Okay. All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on this? What are your, what are your thoughts? What's the commission's thoughts on, I think we've kind of settled that, um, we've all agreed that we're going to move forward. We'd like to move forward with an overlay. So what are your thoughts on, on, um, having a real restrictive overlay or not a restrictive overlay? Are there any conditions that anybody wants to see on that? No?
If I may ask, what are, what's the timing on our review of this ordinance or this overlay?
Uh, why do we have until August? I think we did an extension. Um, we did a six month extension and so I think that we're out till August.
I believe it is August, yeah.
Okay, all right. And I trust Emily. So there we go.
Yep, Kim, this is Larry. And I have a question. The, the less restrictive overlay protects the existing mobile or manufactured homes. They cannot be knocked down, so it's kind of a status quo of where we're at today. We're protecting the home. But we're also protecting the small business. In this case, the hair shop. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct because the, the hair shop isn't part of the overlay. The overlay is only placed over the existing mobile home park developed parcels. So the underlying zone, the underlying zone might have, you know, a hair shop, um, you know, and the mobile home park. But the zone overlay only applies to the mobile home park.
Okay.
Okay, that, so just the actual mobile homes that are currently
In place.
In place.
Right, exactly. That's, that's where we have discussed before and have provided a map that shows only the existing stock of mobile home parks in Squim. Those parcels that are already developed with those parks have the overlay drafted, put over, over on top of them on, in, in the map that we've drafted, included in your packets.
Okay, and then I did, um, have a question about that Doug brought up that I'd like some clarification on. So, so Gilgal is a, um, you know, it's a place where you can go park your RV and you could live there all year if you wanted, or you could, you know, just be there for a month or whatever. But then there, like Squim West, which is, um, there, that's more of like a, like people use that more as like a permanent residence rather than, oh, I'm going to go to Squim for the summer. So how, is there any way to decipher between the two of those or is it like, you know, because I feel like Squim West, because it is more of, um, what it's being used for is more of like permanent affordable housing, where Gilgal is more of like a temporary semi, you know, permanent temporary type thing. So do we include them? And then, and then the John Wayne Marina, um, one down there, that threw me for a loop. So how, how does this all connect? Like how do we make a decision that, or recommendation that is going to protect? Because I know that we can't say, well, you know, people use this spot Gilgal differently than they use this spot Squim West, even though they're both set up the same. So how do we make sure that we're, you know, being, um, you know, like across the board, protecting, protecting all of the spaces?
Well, we're, we're not as a part of this, not as a part of this effort, um, protecting RV parks. So it sounds like Gilgal is specifically exclusively an RV park. It's not a mobile home park or a manufactured home park. And so it's not subject to the ordinance that was issued by council for us to, um, work to be able to enact provisions that protect the preservation of mobile and manufactured home parks. That, uh, while it may be entirely, um, you know, uh, relevant to be able to have that discussion, that discussion is something to be had in a separate matter in the future. Because at this point is something that would be in the consulting land development world. We call this scope creep. Um, and we'd be in scope creep territory.
Okay, so the overlay will protect manufactured home, mobile home parks? And not places that have, where it's like, like an RV, even if it's used for permanent housing, correct?
Right, right, exactly. If it's an RV park, then it's not subject to this ordinance.
Okay. Yes, Alex.
Um, having lived in an RV for seven months when I, uh, my wife and I first arrived in Squim, even at Gilgal, there were, um, people living there nearly full time and, uh, and in many of these parks, uh, some will be snowbirds living there half a year and they really need this place for, for half a year or more. And then, um, lest we not be prepared for the imminency of change with the, um, impending, uh, de- development of the, um, resort area near John Wayne Marina. I, I know from experience living in RV parks that there are a lot of people that have no other, um, option economically but to live in an RV. And you can have a really good life in a, in a well-managed place. It's a, it's a really nice community. And I'm afraid we may be seeing, uh, 50 to 60, uh, families living in RVs at John Wayne Marina RV Park, um, suddenly, uh, put in peril of losing, um, their, their spot. And, uh, I think if anyone's in the audience that knows anyone in RV situations, it's maybe something we don't, we can't combine, uh, with this, uh, manufactured home protection, uh, overlay. But it's, uh, the question of RV parks is, uh, is real important and I think it will be in the future as we see with floods, um, brush fires, um, all the catastrophes happening in Texas, Louisiana, and so many other places demolished by tornadoes and all the rest. An RV is the, if you can afford it, is just the best temporary place to get your life together after, uh, a big life change. And, um, I, um, I'd like us, if we could be proactive in providing some sort of solution for, for those people here in the community now and that we're going to see more of in the future.
Well, maybe that, maybe that's something that we'll have Emily put, um, in our Well, maybe that, maybe that's something that we'll have Emily put, um, in our, our working document that, you know, so, so it stays, you know, like, you know, in our, on our minds, something that we want to work on, and then we, um, move forward with this, just, you know, be in the mobile home manufactured home parks, but we'll have it.
Thank you very much.
Direct staff, um, if, if it's appropriate to
Yes.
Look at that.
Because I would say, I would say the, uh, for the, um, the apprehension and the lack of security, which, uh, so many, uh, members present here in manufactured home developments feel, um, there's an unrepresented community living in RVs, uh, who, um, may feel the insecurity to two or three times, possibly the amount that has brought you here, and, um, just want to be ready to help them in any way we can.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, do we have anything else on that? No? Okay, uh, so, so I think that we're looking to provide some direction. I'm, I'm feeling that we move, you know, I'd like to recommend that we move forward with the, um, the overlay, and since, since the overlay will, um, will always preside in a conflict, I don't see the need to provide, to put a lot of, um, restrictions on that, um, because I think that it kind of, if it, if it always, you know, is what is deferred to, then, I mean, it is just that, it is what it is always deferred to. Yeah, great, Alex, okay. Dennis? Okay. All right, is that, is that what?
I only might add, I only might add that if there is no conflict, if you write it really without restrictions, then there is no conflict, so there is nothing to defer to.
Okay. Anything on that? No, okay, Dennis?
Could you repeat that, Kim, please?
Sure, yeah, so if there, if, if it's, if it isn't written with a lot of restriction, then there would be no conflict inherent between what is allowed, um, to be used by the land's underlying zone and by the zone overlay. Where there is no conflict, there's nothing to defer to. Again, that does not mean that there aren't a wealth of other state mandated protections that have been recently adopted in RCW this year and last year that go towards that, those protections of, and, uh, preservation of mobile home parks. Um, but if, if, if we were to write something without a lot of restriction, um, then it would mean that there is no conflict between the underlying zone and the overlay, which means there's nothing for, there's nothing to defer to the overlay to guide.
Could, could you give us an example of what might be, like, like, can you give us an example of if we didn't write it with any restrictions and there's nothing to defer to, I mean, what would, what would be deferred to if we had restrictions?
If you, so if you had something that, like a restriction in the mobile home park overlay zone, and it said, the only thing that's allowed to be here is a mobile home park, then there would be inherent conflict between the zone overlay and the underlying zone, because the underlying zone probably has a number of things that it allows to be used there, personal services, professional services, certain types of residences, public services maybe, um, and so there would be inherent conflict between what the zone would allow and what the overlay would allow. If somebody were to come along and want to be able to redevelop the land conceivably sometime in the future, they would be met with, yeah, the zone says that you can do this, but the zone overlay says that you can only put a mobile home park here, which means that you have to defer to what the, what is governed by the overlay, because there is conflict and defer to the overlay in terms of conflict. And so that would be the only thing that's allowed to be used. This would be likely what I expect most people in the audience would be advocating for this evening. The alternative is that there would be no restrictions, and we, we could write something that says, you know, the zone overlay defers to the uses of land that are authorized by its, by its, um, underlying zone, in which case, any use conceivably could be, um, you know, repurposed on that land if somebody came along and went through every single one of the state's provisions that go, that have been put in place to be able to effectually protect and preserve the, the existing stock of mobile home parks in Washington State.
So, so am I understanding that if, if we did that, then it, it would, there would be no purpose for an overlay then, right?
I don't think that that's unfair to summarize.
Okay. Because it wouldn't make, it wouldn't, because if somebody could come in and redevelop the land according to what is allowed, I mean, they can do that right now.
Right, yeah, again, again, against a wall of state provisions that would make it pretty unlikely, in my opinion, um, but, um, and, I mean, you know, unappealable probably to most developers, it would just be too arduous. Um, but I think that it's a fair point to, to make, that if there isn't any, any sort of, you know, separate governance afforded by the overlay, then it's, i- it's, it's limited in its purpose and its effect.
Okay, thank you, but it does, so if we do put the, the overlay in effect, um, what you're saying is, is that it's just kind, essentially it'll just codify that the mobile home park protection, because right now, you know, somebody could come in and say, yes, I'm going to sell the land, I'm going to redevelop it, but they have to go through all of the, um, like you said, all of the regulations and laws, um, for the state. But it is possible, but with the overlay essentially, it's really not.
It's prohibited, will in perpetuity be a mobile home park.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand, because I know this is a really important issue. Um, does anybody else have any comments or thoughts at all? How's everybody feeling about the overlay or no overlay?
Based on that understanding, I think the more conservative one protects the homeowners to a greater extent.
Yeah, I agree.
And I would prefer to go that way, if that, if I'm understanding it correct, is the overlay could now, if it's, if it's very restrictive, it would protect the, the renter, the mobile home park tenant, um, to a greater degree.
Right, I agree.
So I would change my, with this better understanding, I would change my position and say I'd rather have the more restrictive.
Which is?
Bring to our next presentation, we can bring a couple of options of varying levels of more restrictive uses.
Okay. More restrictive uses with the overlay in place.
Right, yeah, so we can bring at our next presentation, we could, we could bring, you know, understanding that the, the hope, if the hope is conveyed tonight, that the, um, that there should be more restriction that is applied, we can bring varying levels of what that restriction could look like. It could be as strict as saying mobile home parks only, or it could be everything that's written in eighteen sixty-two, which includes a few other sorts of ancillary uses that are generally related to the function of a mobile home park, including things like play areas for, for the, you know, residents of the parks.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I would look, look forward to, to that, almost like a pro and con list of going less restrictive and more restrictive.
Yeah.
That's, that's how I usually make decisions, thank you.
Okay, okay.
I agree.
Okay, so that's clear as mud for you, Kim, but we would, um, yeah, I think we definitely all want, you know, we're, we want to move forward with the overlay for sure. And, um, yeah, if you could give us some examples of, of restrictions to the land use, uh, I definitely think that it should be things that would be cohesive to the, to the mobile home parks, like play areas or, you know, I don't know, a clubhouse or something along those lines, but something that would, that would work well with that, I guess.
Gotcha.
Okay, anything else on this? No? Okay. All right, thank you, Kim. We, uh, we appreciate you bringing this to us.
Yeah, of course, happy to. Um, I have another agenda item, so I'll fade into the background until that.
Okay, let me see. Okay, so now we are moving on to new business. Oh, and this is you again, Kim. And this one is, okay, everybody, please welcome Kim. Um, so this is interim control ordinance regarding plat extensions. Let's see, I think we are, we are ready for you, Kim.
You are ready for me, I'm not ready for you, you're faster than me, but I'm nearly there, okay. Here we go. Okay, so, uh, this new business agenda item is to be able to initiate our work with the planning commission to, um, discuss an interim control that would, that has been put into place by ordinance with the city council, um, as it relates to the extensions of approved final plats in Squim. Um, plats had been, um, uh, extensions of plats had been governed in two separate sections of Squim's municipal code, that seventeen twenty zero eight zero and twenty oh one A zero three zero, and the provisions of those codes conflicted, um, in really damaging and unclear ways, um, for staff to be able to implement and for the public and the development community to be able to understand. And so, um, having acknowledged this fact and uncovered this conflict, staff came to city council on March eighteenth, and, um, we were approved via interim control via, uh, ordinance, and I should say, I'm sorry, that's my own typo, twenty twenty four dash zero one one, um, and that interim control allowed for the, um, six month validity of a new control being in place, which was to repeal seventeen twenty zero eight zero and revise twenty zero one A zero three zero. And this decision was made based off of research that, um, Charisse and I did together, and with collaboration with Christina, the city attorney, um, to be able to explore some of the ways that, um, other cities, uh, govern the extensions of plats. And so, um, what we saw in Squim's code were, uh, these codes saying two different things. Seventeen twenty zero eight zero governed that, um, the power to extend a plat was one that was held by the city council, um, based on a recommendation from the DCD director, and that, um, that, that an extension could be granted for one year, and that two of those extensions could be granted. So we have, um, that the decision is made by the council, and that two one-year extensions could be granted for final plats approved in Squim. Conflicting to that was twenty zero one A zero three zero, which governed that the power to be able to extend a plat was held with the DCD director, so council was not needed to be involved, and it limited the, um, the one-year extension for a plat to, um, one authorized extension. Uh, we, uh, we looked at, uh, a number of ways that this has been governed in other local municipalities in Washington, and we saw a lot of consistencies and reflected on Squim's past practice when it was up against a need to extend a plat, and the, uh, kind of administrative process or legislative process, um, that was undergone to be able to, to, uh, move through that request, and, um, acknowledged that, um, council really is not a, uh, in, in staff's opinion, a necessary rulemaking, uh, or decision-making body for the extension of a plat, that power is absolutely something within the capacity of the DCD director, um, and that only one such one-year extension is appropriate to be approved. And so we brought recommendations for the repeal of, uh, of the code entitled seventeen, and instead offered a revision to twenty zero one A zero three zero, and that revision is what you see, um, in red text tonight. And it essentially provides that, um, an applicant has fourteen, has, has to, um, request a plat extension within fourteen days prior to the, the expiration of their plat, to be able to make an, a request to the DCD director for an extension, and that the DCD director holds the power to be able to grant that extension, um, that only one such one-year extension can be granted, um, and specifically that the design of the project is carried forward through the extension time period in a manner that's consistent with the, um, with the, uh, provisions in place at the time of the project's approval. And that's important because we were reading that some municipalities essentially remove the vested right of the project, um, subdivisions carry vested rights in the state of Washington, which means that they are vested to the code that was in place at the time of the application. Um, and what we were reading in some code is that the, a plat extension would require the applicant to design the, um, you know, revised portions of their project consistent with what was, uh, what, with how code exists at the time of the request for the extension, um, which really just removes their vested rights. Um, Christina and I and Charisse all talked about it and, um, felt as though that was, uh, a potential conflict with the vested rights in Washington. And so, um, believe instead that a more appropriate provision, um, and way to be able to consider this matter is to hold the, any changes, uh, that could occur through the plat extension, um, to be consistent with what was approved at the time of the plat's approval. Um, that respects the vested rights that the, that the subdivision carries, otherwise there's just no point in extending it, you might as well just apply for a new plat if you're going to be held against today's code rather than enjoy the benefits of the vested right. Um, and so that's what we brought to council in March. Um, council, uh, uh, approved the interim control that was proposed, um, via ordinance, uh, about six or seven weeks after that, within the sixty day period that's required to hold a public hearing, we held a public hearing, and that was, um, just a couple of weeks ago. Um, and so the, uh, the interim control is in place through September, um, and, um, and so now begins our, um, offer to workshop with planning commission to see if there's any feedback this, that this commission has on the verbiage that's been created for this interim control.
Okay, thank you. Any of the commissioners have any input on this? Yes, Dennis?
Uh, yeah, Kim, I have a question on the, um, extension request being submitted, um, fourteen days prior to the plat expiration, and then later on it says thirty days. Um, is that pertaining to the same type of preliminary plat expiration, or is that a different timeframe that we're looking at for a permit application?
Um. It's, it's that the, so I, I, I run, so twenty, I've only taken a snippet of twenty zero one A zero three zero, and so the reason that there's two different dates listed here is that they're in, in sections, um, you're seeing sections A and E on the screen, in sections B, C, and D, there are provisions for permit, um, um, application extensions that can be considered as long as they're submitted within fourteen days prior to their expiration, but in terms of a plat, then the, the plat is held actually to thirty days. Um, so, so within thirty days prior to its extension, or prior to its expiration is when that application for an extension can be made.
Okay, so there is a difference then between the permit application and the preliminary plat application then? Okay.
Okay. Any, anybody else? Yes.
I just, I just want to make sure, on the screen, um, E one A is worded a little differently than what we got in our package. So it looks like, because my question was, um, one A said, in place at the time of application, it looks like you've amended that to say, "application for an extension."
Right, this, this reads now, um, I, I caught that mistake, that was again my mistake.
Okay, okay.
I wrote it wrong, but it now reflects what's actually written in the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? I, I think it looks good, I don't have any, I don't have any issues at all, or... or recommendations for revisions. I think it looks good. Does anybody else have anything different?
No, except a question, anyone with, familiar with this business by the city, does that one-year extension usually satisfy the needs of the, of the, of the developer of, of those, those plats?
I don't know. I can't speak to that only because I've only been under contract with the city for seven months. Oh, good, Sarah's here.
We haven't had that much development in the past like what we have now. I do recall, I think it was about two years ago, one of the plats came forward for an extension. Was it Bell Estates? Can't remember the name. Bell Hill Estates got an extension, but then nothing never, ever came out of it. So that's the only example that I know of.
Might, might the city have a, sort of a, a chart with all the approved developments and kind of see how the horse is racing down the track to the different stages and construction and everything? And then which ones there's no activity on at all that might expire? Is, is someone familiar with that?
Alex.
I'm not asking for a new chart.
We have a current projects page with land use projects that are currently in a certain stage of development. If the notice of decision has been issued to the applicant, then we put it on the website. If it's still in review and it hasn't been officially accepted, like they're, they're checking for completion of the application, all that stuff, that's not on the website yet. It doesn't have expiration dates, but you can get a lot of information from, from what's on there. I've included a map where you can click on, you know, the location and go to the project. It's, it's pretty.
Oh, great. What's the key word to, to use on the?
Just go on our homepage, squimwa.gov, and then current projects. It's a tab like middle, just like right before you have to start scrolling. It's right there.
Wow, you've done it. Thank you.
And I'll tell you, I'll just comment on this. So we've, we have bumped into, should we be, I think you were getting to, should we be creating a tickler file or some kind of automated message proactively to some of these folks as we are nearing some of these things? And I, I think the answer is yes, I would like to be able to be, to be, offer that service. We, we're, we've talked about it. We've got, we're working on tighter implementation and whatnot. But the, right behind software implementation will be customer service and how to do more of this. So because right now the burden often is on them and they don't know about those dates and they're, they may have lost that. So the, the intention is to really provide that and let, if, through email or however, so that they, we've made an attempt to be a, you know, a communicative city for them. So it's not in place yet, but it should be.
I'm not asking for anything new.
I do have something that I think you might find interesting. We recently developed it and it's a, it's a map of the city. It's a story map. It's kind of interactive, but it shows you where all of the development that's actually currently in process, not pre-application, but actually a formal permit has been applied for. It doesn't tell you what stage it's in, but you can click on it and it shows you the plat map and everything and how many units are involved. I'd be happy to forward that to you via email if you're interested. I, I can tell you there's 633 housing units in the pipeline right now, whether it's, you know, permit application or actually undersite construction. And you've all been up 7th Avenue to see what's going on up there. I'm sure that's Rolling Hills. It's actually undersite construction right now. I'll be happy to send that to you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay. Anything else on this? I think it looks good. I think we should tell Kim to move forward. Anything else? Okay. I think we're good on that.
Emily, do we need a motion or anything? That sounded, that sounded so darn close to a motion. Do we need one? It sounds like this is a matter that we don't even need to bring back.
I, I didn't see on our agenda packet that a motion was required. Is that correct? Was I looking at the right one? Let me look.
I don't think that there is one. Let me, yeah, if you have it up already, because I'd have to read.
Okay.
If this is a matter that we wouldn't bring back to planning commission and would say that the, the planning commission gave a recommendation to council to adopt the interim control as written, then that, that sounds powerful enough to need to be substantiated by a motion.
I would agree. Yep.
All right. Would anybody like to, to make a motion? Okay, I, I move to recommend, to send this recommendation, recommendation to council as written. Second, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed?
Sorry, who seconded? I looked away. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're good to go on that.
Thank you, Commission.
Thank, thank you, Kim. Sorry to put you through the wringer tonight.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Okay, so now we're moving on to conformity review of the proposed six-year CIP, which is Nick. He's been practicing.
Man, I was looking forward to performing to a crowd tonight, but I guess I couldn't hold their attention. So for the record, as Emily is queuing up the PowerPoint, hopefully, my name is Nick Dusty. I'm the city engineer. And I'm here to present the capital improvement program for 2025 to 2030. So I guess while that's being queued up, oh, perfect timing. And then do we have the button push thing that? Did he take it, take it with him? So we can, yeah, so if you want to boot that up there with the nice looking cover slide. And I apologize, can you, Dennis and Larry, can you pronounce your last names for me so I don't? Hewith?
LaFever.
LaFever. Okay. Well, welcome. Nice to meet you. So if you're not familiar, this is the, what we are calling the first touch of the capital improvement program for conformity to the city's comprehensive plan. So how I'd like to start off is doing a compare and contrast of the 2024, 2029 process and discussion points and what drove the, the document you see before you tonight. You can see that the five, four out of the five bullet points are the same and the underlying difference being the prioritization matrix that we built and deployed last year and a focus on external funding this year. And really what that means is the, the matrix is a nine-point guideline. And that guideline scores each project that we have across our different master plans on a score of one to 100 through nine different categories, which I believe you should have attached in that document, those categories and what they detail and what they encompass. So things like census data, alignment with the master plans that we have. One of them, and having quite a significant score, is funding. And projects that have potential for external funding scored higher than projects that we believe had to be city-funded or didn't have full third-party or external funding available to them. Going through that process and developing the CIP last year exposed that the funding, planning aspect, it needed to be explored a little deeper. Just the fact that funding was available through the state or local funding agencies wasn't quite enough. What we ran into were years where multiple projects could be eligible for the same pool of funding. And of course, we don't want to have competition between our own projects for that pool of funding. So moving forward, what you'll see is the, the CIP and the projects listed are pretty much the same. There's a few new ones that kind of shuffled up front. But really what we focused on was that funding window. When can we apply? What funding opportunities can we play off of each other to pool money in a little bit more efficient and effective fashion? And there's a lot more intent of where the project is located than just this one scored higher than this one. So it's in a sooner year, right? And we also put a little bit of project planning in there. So looking at the larger scope of things, should we order projects A, B, C in that certain way? Or in actuality, does C for planning and funding need to be bumped before B? So the actual order is A, C, B. And so we'll, we'll be walking through that as, as we go through the CIP. For Commissioners Hewith and the Fever, LaFever. Last year, I, I provided a pre-recorded slideshow and I, I didn't really like that format. It felt a little lecture-heavy, so I was really hoping for this to be a little more discussion-driven. I don't mind being the only one talking, but the, the intent was, is a, as we go through, you know, questions may arise. We're at the very end. Questions may arise. And the, the hope is that the process, if there's additional information needed, come back for a second touch before the public hearing. I would imagine maybe you'll have some specific finance questions as we dive into this, but will not be, or feel any which way if you have a question or a comment through the middle of, of the presentation here. So if we want to move on to the next slide, please. So here we go. So this here is our, is our CIPA team. And this is front and center because it, it really is a, a team effort for everyone you see on the screen between engineering, administrative support with Amy in the crowd here, helping with the finance and our operation managers helping us in the field, understanding what the everyday, what our crews are doing every day. And if our CIP on paper is aligning with problem areas that we're seeing out in the field, really bringing in that operations aspect. And then of course, our field crews, right, if we come in. So we really try to incorporate the whole Public Works Department in putting this together and presenting it to you as you see it today. Want to go to the next slide, please? So just cover some background, especially for, for the new, new folks here. The purpose of the capital improvement program is to be used as a scheduling and funding coordination document. It provides framework for city council and funding and budgeting and supports and concurs with the comp plan to promote growth in the city through infrastructure planning and expansion of utilities being the number one example of that, the planning and growth of, of utilities to actually have growth in the city. And lastly, it provides policymakers and the, and the public with guidance and details on how infrastructure will be developed and maintained by city staff and crews. And so I include the components here, which is, which are the same documents that built the CIP last year. All of these documents have individual capital facilities plans. Those capital facilities plans are generated in six and 20-year intervals and are specific to the individual plans themselves. So you can see we have a water system plan, general sewer plan, transportation master plan, parks, and last stormwater. And these same reports were the ones that we used last year, hence putting everything through the priority matrix and an emphasis on funding since we've already prioritized the projects last year. As these projects, or sorry, as these plans get updated, those new projects will be sent through the priority matrix and placed onto the CIP according to that score. So it really is a dynamic, living program that will be updated when these, when these get updated. Next slide, please. So this, this, this is directly diving into the CIP. And I included last year's, the 2024, 2029 as a comparison to make sure that, that we, we have a little bit of a true up here, right? You know, we see a six-year program and that slowly marches forward year by year. But you know, what were we proposing and is that in line with, or with what we're doing now? And so these PWP projects here is a planning effort to coordinate multi-divisional projects. So you can see West Squim Bay Corridor Improvement has a water and it has a sewer element. Prior to last year's CIP, these would have been considered two separate projects. Now with the PWP, yes, they're two different, two separate ways of tracking money, but they are one public works project. So this just cleans up how we track projects. And as, as we move through here, again, harkening back to financial planning, the two major projects that we had to plan around when assessing where we get funding and what type of funding, grants, loans, et cetera, focused around two of the city's biggest projects that we've had in recent history. The Silver Horn Deep Well, which is about a $4.8 million project. We actually just finished drilling that project, or digging that well, I believe, a week, a week, a week and a half ago. And it should be developed to a point where we can test it. So that's phase one of, of the project, of the 4.8 million. The second one is this project here, the West Squim Bay Corridor. And that is our regional lift station. We acquired last year property at the corner of Forest Road and West Squim Bay Road. And we are currently in the process of designing this project, hope to construct majority in '25 and complete in '26. So that loan and grant service is 17 million. So those two projects alone over the next year or two are over $21 million. And so that debt service is really the cornerstone of how we negotiated and managed the placement of the projects on the CIP, understanding that those two projects are very important for regional growth, the well-being in the Southwest and the lift station being in the Northeast, to be able to build out those two portions of town that are, that were previously either in the county or in the UGA and really didn't have opportunity to develop. So these, those two projects would really open up those two portions of town. Moving through these public works projects, we recently completed our ADA transition plan for our right-of-way streets, sidewalks, pedestrian crossings. And we bumped this up to the front of the list, understanding that these ADA transition plans are going to be critical tools in obtaining funding in the future. So we have the previous one, or like I said, complete. The next one is Parks and Facilities, which we have projected for 2025. And then you can see this gap here. And that gap is telling a story that the, the debt load of those is telling a story that the, the debt load of those two big projects are being felt. We have to push projects out to be able to not only plan financially on obtaining construction money, but planning and figuring out how to draft developer and latecomers agreements to be able to start these projects that require additional grants and loans. So it's both the upfront cost that we need to manage and then paying off that, that debt load. If you can go to the next slide. So we have our capital facilities here with the number one project, multi-phase project being our city shop, much similar to you saw in the previous year's plan. We are, this is at the top of the list and is a priority because the whole entire $35 million campus that we're trying to plan for the city shop, we are continuously looking for funding. So we want to be able to set ourselves up to be active whenever money becomes accessible, whether it's grant or loan or a combination of the two. So this is going to be a longstanding project. And as we go further into the funding graphs, you'll see that these large amounts have a pretty big impact on how we try to plan. Again, not only for the upfront capital costs, but paying off that loan or obtaining that grant. Moving down, we have Gear Hard Park Building Removal that we bumped up to allow us to have a little bit more open space for planning and be able to develop that park in a little bit more. And to be able to plan the park in a more efficient fashion, right? We have old buildings that we currently are either stand empty or using for storage. So in an attempt to beautify that area, removal of those buildings, pretty low risk, pretty low cost. And so we figured we'd prioritize that to make it accessible and to the public.
Hey Nick, where is that park?
Is that Third? Yeah, it's, it's about adjacent to Norman Eunice Street on, on the end of Third there. South side of the highway. It's on the east side of Third.
Okay, I guess I never realized that was a park.
Yeah, right. So I mean, because there's, there's a house on it. So that's why it, that doesn't really look like a park. So that'll beautify that area and, and make it more attractive for people to go in with pets and kids and things like that.
Okay.
Yep. Next, we have citywide security. This has been a growing issue, coordinating city security as we gain more infrastructure. As we'll dive into, we're going to be proposing a booster station. We're going to have new control, a new control building for our new well. And of course, we have our new lift station. So as we are bringing on new infrastructure, updating security and setting that standard is important. That's why we bumped it up to 2025. And then last year, we have the Guy Cole ECC Generator. This is an opportunity for emergency planning as far as being a longstanding project that we can knock off, knock off the list. Again, with the main focus of the facilities plan being that city shop and constantly pursuing funding for that. Jump into parks. We will be purchasing the bridge replacement, the replacement bridges this year and hope to install those bridges next year. So the, the prefab bridges had a little bit longer lead time than we anticipated. And finding a manufacturer that's cost-effective took a lot more time this year. So this year will be a purchase, next year will be the install for that. After that, we have Centennial Place or Centennial Park Construction. That's a continuation of a project we are currently doing. I believe the 30% funding is under 30% design. Yep. So this just details that timeline to not only pursue funding, obtain funding, but also execute construction over these three years here, four if you are including this year. From there, we also have the park equipment for Margaret Kerner, Carrie Blake and Doc Standard. And this is where we kind of start breaching into the, how do we plan financially? And how do we phase construction to allow us to pursue funding adequately? So you can see we have a rather large equipment cost or construction cost here. Then we have a gap to reapply and design into construction here in latter years with that same funding source. So instead of going back to back to back to back, which we haven't found success with, and usually the funding windows aren't an annual occurrence, looking at the financial planning of that funding source allowed us to say, all right, this makes more sense. If we pursue one park at a time and we put some gap years in between for that acquisition of the funding. Pickleball resurfacing, so that's been on and off. We've applied multiple times to have a, a grant do that work. I wouldn't say this is a placeholder, but we wanted to keep it on the CIP because if it pops up some, you know, grant, it's easy to take that and bump it forward or backward, depending on what we're seeing develop. This splash pad here is of course some more park, not park equipment, but plays into the timeline of, well, we'll do Margaret Kerner here. We'll do the splash pad development here and then head back to, I believe this is Doc Standard in Carrie Blake, Carrie Blake in the end years. So this here is placed where it is not only for funding, but to say, you know, based on this plan and how we build it and where, how we develop Carrie Blake, what's the best opportunity to get the placement of that splash pad? You know, it might be the new park that we just acquired. So that's why it's in, in, in the latter middle years of, of the CIP there. And then last is the Parkland Purchase. This isn't so much a park purchase, it is more, it is a, a streets purchase. So when we get to the streets portion of the CIP, you'll see there's a streets project in this same year. And this will be a convenient byproduct of that purchase of right-of-way because we don't need the full parcel. We just need a section of right-of-way to continue ninth north from Brackett. And so that's a nice opportunity to provide the development of a little pocket park in that year, should we find funding for it.
On parks? Is there, is there anything, have we thought about redoing the skate park at all? Is that something?
We don't have any specific plans. We have heard rumblings in the community about redoing it. I think there was some funding maybe effort going on, but nobody has approached us to ask for it. And we haven't, it wasn't identified in our parks master plan. So that's why it's not on the CIP.
Okay.
So open to any information you have or what effort has taken place so far for that?
Yeah, well, I know, so I worked with the gentleman that really spearheaded the funding for it. And I know that he was very close to receiving a matching grant. He, he's passed away recently and, but I think that there are some efforts to kind of continue that as his legacy. So I didn't know. And I'm not, I don't, I'm not privy to exactly what, I just know that before he had gotten sick, you know, he was sharing with me at work like, hey, I'm, you know, this many thousands away from that matching grant. And, you know, it would have been a pretty substantial amount. So I, I don't know if that grant is still open or I have no idea where that situation is. I just wasn't sure. You know, if it was, you know, if anybody had come forward to inquire about it, or if it was something that there was a need for.
Nobody has approached the city and like I said, we did hear that kind of information sort of off on the side, but I don't know what kind of grant funding it was. I don't know how much he had.
Yeah.
So be interested in it.
Okay, I will see if I can direct anybody your way.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I might just add that I, I'll be reporting on, on the comp plan and the public meetings that are coming up. We've got a couple of months of public engagement and so that, that might be a great place or time to hear about from the public what they think about that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to the, the sewer portion, you can see the, the sewer list, I believe, is, is smaller compared to the rest of the, the rest of the categories and also much smaller than what was presented last year. Reason for that being our West Squim Bay Corridor project consuming quite a bit of financial capacity in, in the sewer side of things. So we have our citywide sewer plan update. We currently have a contract for that now. And that is going to be coordinated with our comp plan update and also coordinated with our transportation master plan, which is also a component of, of the comp plan, as you're well aware. This project here was really born from the portion of the, the A team from the field crews. So the manholes on Washington Harbor Loop are the first series of manholes that collect and convey sewer discharge from the pressure line. And that comes from the state park and from the casino. Lo and behold, with the size and length of that pipe, we got a very anaerobic environment. And that anaerobic environment creates H2S gas, which eats away at the concrete. So normally those concrete manholes are, you know, 12 inches thick. And now we're to a point where they're anywhere from half to a quarter of that of corrosion. So, you know, this has been on the field crews list of needing repairs for, for quite a while. And we finally said, you know what, you know, we respect the, the work that you guys are out there and providing us consistent notice on this, we'll, we'll get this done for you. So it not only follows through on, on working with the field crews, but it also will significantly improve any sort of I and I issues we have with groundwater. Because that line goes directly to the trunk line that then goes to the WRF. So all that wa, that, all that wastewater is a very short compared to the rest of the city, travel time to, to the WRF. So the potential for eliminating that I and I and the, the influence it will have is, is very high and very positive. The rest of these projects here, again, play into the financial planning. The pools of money that we have opportunities to pursue are very similar. And we need to spread out not only the funding for that, the capital funding and the debt funding, but also design and planning. So we have bio solids capacity. This is a WRF upgrade that will increase WRF operations. We have our Willow Street Sewer Main manholes replaced and it's an upsize as well. This is the start of the trunk line that all of the wastewater generated in the city or a majority of it flows through to get to the WRF. So increased capacity at the headworks of the WRF, increase the flow to the capacity at the WRF, leading us to this final project sewer aerobic digester, which then improves the operations and output of the WRF. So three major projects, all increasing capacity of the WRF. Yeah.
A question on the, that, that's quite extraordinary. Is that hydrogen sulfide? The gas from decomposing wastes, I guess, can eat through iron?
Concrete.
Concrete, concrete, okay. But the manhole covers are, is the concrete around the manhole covers? That's the weak point? I see.
Correct, yeah. So you, you have your base that has your channel and then you have your barrels that range from four, six to eight feet that build up and then you have your cone. So all those concrete components will be eaten away.
Incredible. The, do the sewer contracts made with the park in the casino, are they covering a lot of this in retrospect? You know, what the annual or whatever their contracts are? Is that, are those funds coming into the city to kind of cover their, their expenses?
Absolutely. It's handled a lot like the wholesale agreement with the Carlsberg Sewer System. So this trunk line will, a portion of these construction costs, you know, with the, specifically with the Harbor Loop replacement will be coming from that, that agreement for maintaining and operating that line.
Oh, great. And then just to go back a bit, a question on the West Squim Bay Corridor sewer improvement. I, I see in the PDN talk about for the John Wayne Resort Development from five to 600 homes down there. And of course, there's the Mariner Outlook phases to be completed and who knows what else? Is, is that foreseen, all of that future need?
Absolutely.
So the capacity is, you, you're preparing the capacity in advance?
Yes, yeah, both in operation of the lift station, but also financial planning as well. Those future contributions, whether it be through annual payments or latecomers or developers agreement, we're still in the process of hammering that out, but financially and operations wise, those are being accounted for in the design and the planning.
Thank you.
I would also like to add that this aerobic digester is designed and start of construction. This year we will be, we got funding for a design memo or tech memo for an analysis to be done. So this gap not only allows that tech memo to be done, the year and a half, two years that it, that it usually takes and that, that report is fully funded, but then come up with a plan to apply for funding in that final block of years. So there's, there's two benefits to how this is planned out for this project and for current funding that we're looking to spend this year. Then we have stormwater, pretty light on stormwater. This North Brown Road is a continuation of a project that we have funding for currently. So that funding open, funding opening opens in July, I believe. So once that opens up and we can start reimbursement, we will get that underway. And this is a planned spot for anticipated rollover of that project into, into 25. We have Happy Valley Stormwater diversion. This is in the same spot as it was last year, I believe. This project is dependent on the county's acquisition of that off-channel reservoir off of River Road. So if that land purchase falls through, for whatever reason, this project also falls through because that land purchase is the match for the funding to do the design and construction from FEMA on that. We have a gap here. This gap we'll discuss later in the streets, but this gap is where we're looking to do the complete streets project. And then after complete streets is done, this Bell Creek Culvert Upgrade, which also includes quite a bit of street work in updating and upgrading the intersection as well. So we prioritized complete streets. That's why there's that gap there, moving on into that replacement of that culvert and upgrading of that intersection. And last, we have a stormwater improvement for Emerald Highlands Pond that we maintain. An improvement in that small amount is mainly to de-brush and dredge the pond. So to put it in its original design condition. And this is pushed out because it also aligns with a sewer project in later years because we're having issues with access to manholes that are on the uphill side of the pond. So that's a little bit of a twofer. And again, going into how do we financially plan for it? It's in the latter years. So we'll clean up the pond, we'll get access to everything. and then we'll work on the manholes that are adjacent to the pond. Next slide. And now streets. So something that we've prioritized, not only the T M P, which is our top project there, is additional safety plans, local road safety plan, safety action plan. And these these plans allow or they open up opportunities for funding. And what we've done is we've, through our local road safety plan, we have access to what's called H SIP funding. And we plan on using both H SIP funding and the Ped Bike Program, which also is, we get enhanced review, I guess, points you could say, through having our action plans to prioritize our signals, which we know has been a point of contention to the public. So so that's what, say again. Yeah, yeah. So that's why we have the Washington Street Signals at Third Ave as the first project with Fifth Ave Intersection and Traffic Signals in the same year bumping down to Seventh Ave. So kind of tiering those projects in on the level of complaints we're getting. Most problematic or oldest to to our least problematic or or least amount of complaints. This West Squim Bay Road Rock Revement Reconstruction has been kind of shuffled back and forth. Specifically, the area we're talking about is the stretch between White, south of White Feather to city limits. If you look on Google Earth, you can see this great armored area that the Marina did all the way to White Feather. Then that rockery shrinks anywhere from six to eight feet. And that's where the extension of the road is. So due to tides and just heavy wind action, that section of road just gets battered. And with an opportunity recognizing that there's some funding windows coming for the for this project specifically, given it being in the shoreline and an alternate route for the highway. We decided to bump this work up planning wise to see what it would entail to get that new source of funding. Go ahead.
I attended the Seabrook presentation and their maps show their property included with tidallands.
Yep.
We're considering putting rock. Is that correct?
Well, we're not putting rock anywhere new. So but yes, the the portion of the road with with the Pit Ship Bridge is is the stretch that we're talking about.
Do they have that tidalland? Is that something that we could get funding from them?
Well, that that was, that was gonna be the last touching point is is what the opportunities are to work collaboratively. And that's why we we kind of bumped that bumped that up. No, no, perfectly fine. And it's a valid question. You know, when you have a big developer like that come in and it's within the bounds of of what they're proposing. I mean, it's it's perfectly natural to see, well, what are you, what, how are you gonna improve it, right? And if you haven't driven over it in in quite a while, its condition is very poor. It's the, it's one of the lowest rated P C I scores in our system. And again, it just, it gets battered every year. We're constantly filling in holes with sand, trying to replace rock above the ordinary high watermark. So and 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 keep it standing. And mainly for the importance of the alternate route of the highway is is kind of what we're what we're looking at. So again, we have the fifth. We have this Johnson Creek Crossing repair that once was a public works project, but we decided to split it back up. It's in the same year as as it's being proposed. However, when this project was originally conceived, the sewer would be realigned instead of going over the culvert in the highway right of way to go on the Trussell Bridge. Well, after some further analysis and walking the Trussell Bridge, we thought that that was not a good idea and propositioned the state to put our sewer line on their new bridge. And they were amicable to that. So it's no longer a streets and sewer project. It is just a streets project. So the funding that we got, which is we can kick it off with raise grant funding to do design work this year will be retrofit and upgrades to the Trussell Bridge to secure it a little better, to improve the condition that it's in. This Keeler Road Bike Lanes is another raise grant. And if you're not familiar with the raise grant, it's a multi-jurisdictional funding pool. I think there's 32 co-signatories, multi-millions of dollars. And so the three projects we requested funding on were Johnson Creek, this Keeler Road Bike Lanes you see here, and then the East Fir, which is a public works project that is bumped into the last block of two years on on the C I P. So we have up until 2032 to spend all that money. So we figured we'd start the project small and build up over the years because we found out that any money that is not spent can be transferred to other projects. So our larger project is in the latter years with some hopes that we could potentially pick up additional money from unused other projects from from other folks. So just some creative shuffling there. Moving further down the list, we have our complete streets here that I discussed earlier that showed that kind of exposed that gap in the previous list that we were looking at. We wanted to knock out some signals and intersections first before going to complete streets, also using this time to acquire funding. And then once that is complete, jumping into the Seventh Ave Intersection there. We have on here the West Squim Bay Road Asphalt Trail. So that got bumped out because not only of this Keeler Road opportunity here to provide connection to the O D T, but to also use that time to properly vet and plan the required right of way acquisition that we need for such a long stretch of potential trail. So we do understand that there are sections of it closer to Washington that are willing to be donated. But after you get further past Rotafer, you're looking at acquisition of private land in order to get that project done. And what we're seeing in right of way acquisition are very long negotiation times and not a lot of funding available to pay for that acquisition. So this offers a good buffer to plan and acquire the funding to make those purchases.
Does does the city retain an easement along West Squim Bay Road? That, I guess not, if you have to acquire land for the path.
So
I I don't, maybe you could explain
Yeah.
to the to the uneducated.
Yeah.
What, what, how far back? I thought it was like 12 feet or something.
So the 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 right of way width for West Squim Bay Road proper varies. And we actually didn't own all of it. So last year I worked with the county to make sure that the city owns all of the West Squim Bay Road right of way between Washington and White Feather. So now we do. So that was step one. Step two was looking at what that existing right of way can maintain, right? And what we're seeing is not only the existing irrigation ditch on the south side that carries a lot of water, right? And so you'd think, well, can't you just put it in a pipe? Well, you can. But then that produces other problems, you know, because of the velocity, the volume of water and the size of pipe needed. We're also dealing with pretty significant grade changes the further east you go. So now you're talking about retaining walls, right? And so in an effort to have a low impact, small footprint, low cost construction project, what we're more than likely looking at and using this time to plan and develop is actually a trail that wanders away from the road further than what the right of way offers. And then at at points going back and forth based on grade and elevation to make sure that we don't have to have retaining walls on the edge of the road, that we don't have to put up guardrail to separate pedestrian access and vehicle access because there is no shoulder. So that that's what we're dealing with when we're talking about planning and acquisition for that trail. Yeah. And then last year, we have the South Seventh Ave between McCurdy Road and Reservoir Road. This is placed here, again, not as a placeholder, but as you are well aware, Rolling Hills is developing. They are developing the east half of that stretch of road. So we thought the city, hey, why don't we go in, we complete the other half. When they're done, whatever year that would be, and give us some time to find money for that. So that way we have a complete corridor when that development is complete and potential for moving further west for the projects that we will discuss now, moving on to water with this red box project here. So starting off, this is a continuation of an existing project, water system, automatic meter reading. So that is a utilities driven project with the water and putting up infrastructure to be able to coordinate and maintain reading of the new meters that we'll be getting and we'll be phasing that in. So this is just the infrastructure to read and collect the data on the meters, not the meters themselves. We have our deep well here that is currently underway. Phase one is almost done. This illustrates phase two, where the control facility is constructed and the pipe is put to connect the well and the new well and the existing wells reconnect it to existing infrastructure on Silverhorn Road. So this is phase two design and construction funding. This boxed, red boxed here is developer contribution. This is a booster station and new main on Reservoir Road. So if you guys are familiar with Legacy Ridge, the housing development, this is not a driver, the Legacy Ridge is not a driver for the project, but it is convenient planning that putting in this booster station would allow that development to happen because they either have to come to the city for water or P U D and currently neither service it. So this is that other project that I was talking about in coordination with the deep well to open up the southwest portion of town for development. This will create a brand new pressure zone that will stretch between Reservoir Road West and Miller Road to the east. So we can start pulling communities on P U D water in city limits and get those meters, get those accounts over to the city finally. So after the completion of the well, we jump to that project, which again has developer funding tied to it. We throw in an emergency purification system. I believe this is around the same time as the generator. So coinciding, emergency water, emergency projects on the water side of things. And then moving down to this West Prairie, which is in coordination with the complete streets. So we have a lot of roadwork and utility work in these two years, hence the gaps you see in in the other lists because we have this lift of of the complete streets to do. The SCADA project is tied to the new infrastructure. So the new well and the new booster station will be outfitted to accept SCADA equipment and that project will be complete in these 28, 29 years once this infrastructure is operational. And then, once we have that infrastructure operational, the plan is to start hacking away at the deficient utilities in the Norman, Eunice and Reservoir Road areas. It's a pretty old community in town. This is again, something we got from the field crews, right? We're constantly jetting these lines. These water lines are always breaking. They always need repairs. What are we gonna do? So this is our effort to to capture that, to make sure that they can focus on more important projects than returning to the same spot. Yep.
How many decades of water capacity do you see the aquifer providing at Silverhorn Deepwell for?
So when when we talk about capacity for the deep well, the main goal or the main out output that we're looking for, well, I shouldn't say the main, that there's two things. Number one is if we can get the capacity and flow gallons per minute that we're anticipating, that one well will have the same production capacity as the three wells we currently operate in Silverhorn. So we we will have that additional source, that additional capacity, right? Instantaneous capacity. The second thing is by going deeper, we reduce mitigation requirements. So we reduce the impact to surface waters like Dungeness River and the various creeks in the area. So as you are probably more than aware of is the seasonal condition of the groundwater. And the closer to the river you get, the more impactful it is in that first aquifer, which is where our current Silverhorn wells reside. So by going to that deeper aquifer, we are less influenced by the seasons. We have a smaller mitigation requirement, but we have the same capacity, if not more, in those drier years, or sorry, drier months of the year. So those are the two main drivers. When you're talking about, I'm assuming you're looking for capacity for growth.
Yes, especially to 2050.
Right.
The whole city.
So the, when it comes to capacity, City of Squim is very fortunate in that all of our sources are in the ground. We don't have any surface influence. Oh, I shouldn't say we don't have any, but the majority of our source is from the ground. So we have very reliable sources when it comes to drawing water from the ground. Where we will experience shortfalls when it comes to being able to support growth is reservoir capacity. So the the amount of water we store, it we, per our newest report, we are good through the 20 year design period. But this project here will open up higher elevations to put larger reservoirs to be able to have that capacity for growth in the future. So it's not necessarily growth that we're looking for from the drilling of the well, but that instantaneous capacity and that reduced mitigation and lesser of a seasonal impact and drought resilience is what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then lastly, just to touch base, we have these, what we deem annual projects. And these projects include city pavement rehab, pedestrian bike improvements, arterial pavement rehab. So these projects here annually are an attempt to have city funded annual projects on a smaller scale that can be done in-house that pick off those problem areas that our field crews are having, right? Localized flooding of stormwater at intersections, picking off ADA ramps, doing bike crossings, sidewalk improvements, ADA improvements, I and I issues like we're seeing with those manhole, manholes at Washington Harbor Loop. So these, these are not, they're unassigned in that they don't have specific locations picked out yet. But as we work through the C I P, the engineering staff, myself, my associate engineer, Austin Wagner, we are developing a plan to use this money to target those smaller areas to get those improvements off of the, or to make those replacements and repairs so we can lessen the workload of the maintenance crew. And we have our totals down here. And so as you can see, in 2025, we're looking at 24.6 million and an increase to 25 million. And then as we get into the latter years, three years, four years, five years out, that's where we see funding being unknown. That's where we have that planning. You can see the lower totals because of that debt that we are bringing on from the West Squim Bay, from the the deep well. So I don't expect these to be larger in the next coming years, but I expect them to be more secure. Yep.
What do you use as a basic annual inflation rate for? What do you use as a basic annual inflation rate for construction costs, if anything?
So that's, going through this year, that is a weakness that we've, that has been exposed. So it's not 3%. It's significantly higher and we are currently trying to determine what that is and we'll be building that into next year's, next year's plan. You know, there's, I've seen construction costs, you know, in the, in the 10s and 12s up into the 33s, right? So being able to suss that out is really, depends on the scope of the project, what utilities you have, what utilities you don't have, things like, do we need pumps? There's different increases on that. Things like asphalt, things like concrete, those costs don't really vary, but when you're talking about plastic pipe, when you're talking about ductile iron pipe, when you're talking about things that need to be manufactured like pumps, valves, things like that, that's where you start seeing those increases. So you'll see higher increases in our utility projects versus straight street projects. So we're just in, we're in the process of trying to figure that out.
Yeah. After the big jump during COVID, it was off the charts, where do you come to for a 20-year, 30-year average? It's kind of hard to figure yet, isn't it?
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. So here we have some, some graphs for you. This is basically to show the different divisions, right? So you can see this kind of yellow color here in the first two years, that being the sewer. So this is your West Squim Bay project. You have these consistently large, kind of pinkish, that's your capital facilities. You have your consistent red bars here, those are those annual projects that we're looking to implement. And then you can see as the years go on, these bars, these columns get more and more uniform, more alike, right? And so that's where that uncertainty comes from, as far as do we think we can get funding? How do we assess debt? How do we assess the capital cost? So that's, this is, the takeaway from this is to show that, you know, the large numbers that we have, when it comes to the totals and the CIP total, are associated with large projects. It's not a bunch of small projects adding up to the amount. So here we show the secured and unsecured funding, and then also whether or not there's developer money involved in the separate projects. So the takeaway, right, is you see in 2025, the rather large tan bar. So we have a large portion of secured funding. And then as the years goes on, because of those funding windows open, you know, so we can't apply for 2026 until you're 2025, that that secured column shrinks and shrinks and shrinks and the unsecured grows. So the hope is, is each year, this tan column will hopefully consume all of the unsecured and each step up as you march from over out here in 2030 into the next planning year, 2025 or 2031 to 2026, that each year that tan bar will grow. And this really just is intended to show the funding sources, right? So you have city funds here, impact fees, transportation benefit district, revenue from utility connections, utility reserves, general fund, all these are city funds. And those are all these small pieces of the pie here, unfortunately. Then you have non-city funds, right? So you have grant, you have loan, you have developer, which is one of these skinny slices of pie here and wholesale. So we have well over $90 million in grant and loan with a majority being unsecured. And I really want to emphasize that because given the cost increases, given how competitive the application process is, there needs to be an expectation and a reminder that the funding is critical. If we don't get the funding, we can't fulfill the project. Not that we don't want to, not that we planned improperly, it's that the funding couldn't be secured. And that's why you see a difference between planned and actual. So just as kind of a final shore up, since we're talking about, you know, ending in the money here, I had, I have some notes. 2023 planned CIP was 14 million with an actual expenditure of five. And so currently this year, we are at 2.4 million. And we are at that 2.4 million, I believe, at the start of the third quarter or not the end, or at the, at the end of the third quarter last year. So we're projected to be significantly, or I shouldn't say significantly, the expenses should be higher, given the cash flow than last year, but again, less than the projected, but we're closing that gap every year between what the planned is and what the actual is.
Does the city issue bonds at all? Is it bonds?
That's why the admin support's there.
The only time I've been aware of bonds was for this building. And we, so we issued general obligation bonds and then we also issued water and sewer bonds for the water and sewer portion of this building. So we've done it once in the last 13 years that I'm aware of, and I don't know further back than that.
Are we voting to that? Or are we just, I mean, I know it's complex.
Yeah. So there's two kinds of bonds. One is general obligation and then there's the voted. They're very complex processes. We'd rather not do that and it still goes to our debt capacity.
So that's, that's the end of it for any additional questions.
Excuse me, when it says RR Sewer, what does the RR stand for?
Reserve.
Oh, I see, N G O.
The, as far as the project, on the project title, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yes, project.
Yeah, sorry, that's repair and replacement, that's just a signifier. So CU, right? If you're looking at like the, the public works project, CU is capacity upgrade, RR, repair and replace. That's just kind of a further level of identifying the purpose of the project. Typically, a CU project would be a growth-related project, right?
Okay. Let's see. I'm trying to, trying to, from, from what the average citizen pays in property tax, the portion, small portion that goes to the City of Squim and then in utility fees, of which a sewer is a part, where do I see the input from those things in the project funding? Would that be general fund? That save from property taxes, portion that goes to the City of Squim, does it go to, end up in general fund? Or, and then with our $65 a month or whatever it is, flat rate for sewer, is that going in, providing the sewer and water maintenance and repair?
So your property taxes go into a fund called REIT, real estate. No, I take that back, that does go in the general fund, the real estate excise taxes is the sale of property. So, yeah, so if, when you look on that slide with the pie chart, you see the various funds that are used, impact fees, transportation benefit fees, utility connections, utility reserves, general fund and real estate excise tax. I don't see in here the actual utility rates and probably, Amy might speak to this more, but that's a very small portion of what goes into our capital funds because we're blessed with growth. So we're able to use the connection fees to fund our projects and not very much of our utility rates fund the actual capital projects. If you get a city that's built out, like maybe Port Angeles and Port Townsend, they're gonna, their utility rates are higher than ours and a big portion of that rate is going to go to fund the capital projects because they don't have those new connection fees to help fund.
Okay, and then a lot of the park impact fees, that's new construction, it's real permits go in that. Because I've heard in some, in some counties and municipalities in the state, to, to build, there's $300,000 of fees, probably impact fees and this and that, to, before you can break, break ground after you buy the property. And it seems like that's be a disincentive to, for building affordable housing if upfront, we're, we're financing a repair and maintenance and expansion so, almost solely on new properties being developed and then it, it makes the homeownership more expensive instead of spreading it over all the users.
So impact fees, transportation and park impact fees are assessed with the individual building permit. So the developer, putting in however many lots, the developer does not pay that when they go to take out a building permit, that's when the impact fee is assessed.
Each lot, yes.
Yeah. And the impact fee is based on what, what impact that individual development has on the need for new capacity. So that, that house's portion of the need for an upgraded intersection or the need for another park. It's a complex formula and it's part of our impact fee study. We just did one last year on parks and transportation will be included in our transportation master plan. So we'll likely have an updated transportation impact fee. But it can only be used on projects that are related to the growth that that particular development.
I see.
It's the pressure that that development puts on our system. It can't be used for repair.
Okay, 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 thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, and I guess just, just to emphasize more, traditionally and how it currently is, the utility fees, like you're saying, $65 a month for water, that, that, those are operations costs. So to operate everything, that's where the lion's share of that goes. And in situations like Port Townsend, if I remember correctly, they still have those operational costs they need to cover. On their utility bill, there is a separate fee, flat fee assessed that changes every year based on what the proposed CIP load is for whatever utility that you're paying for. So those operational costs, those utility fees that you pay never go away. Those need to be there for everyday operations. And when you get built out, that's how that's compensated for. Yep.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody have any other questions for Nick at all? No?
Oh, we've seen basically city expenses, at least for capital improvement and transportation. How does, how does this correlate to city income? Or that's a whole different subject.
Yeah, I think that's a different money discussion there.
Okay.
This is, this is a component of how that income is spent.
I must say, you've done a fabulous job presenting all of this.
It truly is a team effort and I need to give quite a bit of credit to, to Amy on her financial analysis, going through numerous iterations about how do we handle the debt? How do we handle the capital costs? How do we anticipate the incoming money from the Mariners' outlooks, the PNNLs, the Seabrooks, you know, and being able to come up with not only a reserve that makes sense and that is compliant with the recommendations, but also to give us breathing room. And so somehow she managed to figure, figure that out in quite a short amount of time. I was fortunately on paternity leave, so I just came into the end product. So, so I really must give her a lot of credit for what you see in front of you today and for this, for the CIP.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else for Nick?
Nope.
No? Okay, so we, if there's no other questions and everybody's okay with everything, we could make a motion to direct staff to schedule a public hearing for the 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan at the next Planning Commissioners Meeting so we can receive public comment prior to making a recommendation to council. Or the alternative is if there's anything else that we would like to, like to direct staff to do, this is the time to let them know so that they can bring it back to us for a second touch in our next meeting. So, okay. Would anybody like to make a motion? Or happy to.
I move that the. I move that the CIP and TIP be passed on to the city council as presented.
Okay, well, we, we gotta do the, so we're not on TIP yet.
Oh, okay.
And we need to schedule a public hearing before next.
Okay.
Yeah. So, okay, I can, I move to direct staff to schedule a public hearing for the 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Program at the next Planning Commission meeting to receive public comment prior to making a recommendation.
That's good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. None opposed? Thank you. So I did, thank you very much, Nick. So you nailed it. I did have one thing for you, Emily. And maybe it's for Matt. So we, we, we made a motion to move the interim control ordinance for the plat extensions, but should we have, should our motion have been to schedule a public hearing before we make a recommendation to the city council? Cause, cause Commissioner LaFever brought that up and I think he's right, that we have to do a public hearing because we haven't held one yet.
And I wouldn't be the right person, so that would be a Christina question unless Sarah or someone else, but I, I would have guessed that she reviewed and signed off on the cover sheet, so I would have guessed that she would have got that maybe? Motion? Didn't even need a motion. So I thought you did that kind of preventatively, just in case. So my guess is she would have caught that. We, we had a similar situation come up in our senior management team today and she caught it and said, not all ordinances need public hearings. So she knows which ones do and don't. So my, my guess is.
Okay, well, can, can I make a motion that if a public hearing is required before, at the next meeting, before our recommendation is sent to public council, that we do a public meeting?
Sure. Yeah, and I can check in with her this week and see kind of what, yeah, because I just looked at the cover sheet, it doesn't say anything about a public hearing being required and there was no motion required. So I'll, I'll just double check with her.
Okay.
Let y'all know.
Well, I moved that if we need one, that it be scheduled.
Cool, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Sounds good.
All those in favor? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Moving on to our last item. And this is for the six-year Transportation Improvement Program. And this is you again, Nick?
It is, and this one is much shorter, so.
I'm gonna keep my comments to myself.
Okay. So this is, document is generated directly from the Capital Improvement Program. The idea behind this document is to show project type, prioritize or reorganize on, on project type, so you can see what the pavement rehab projects are, the improvement, pedestrian. So you can see what the pavement rehab projects are, the improvement, pedestrian bike and so on. And it details all of the transportation projects that we have on our capital plan because the CIP only presents the six years. So you can see the projects that are in the quote unquote out years and have a chance to review and make comments on the whole roster of transportation projects instead of just the six years. So this document doesn't really have a whole lot of edits to it, given that the majority is the out years. What you'll see is that we will slowly pull projects and that will be reflected in, in the CIP. So there's no different information here, just more.
Okay, what is the, I know that I just saw it, the, the realignment of the ODT in Kerry Lake Park. Where, where is the proposed realignment? Do you know?
I, I do not know, but I can, I can take a look at that to see what it references in our, in our master plan. Now that I, I put my foot in my mouth about the TIP not changing, it actually will change with the master plan that we're going to be updating. And projects like what you're talking about here, realignment of, of trail, those will be better defined. So I, I don't think I'm going to find a project description or a location that is very descriptive. But I will definitely take a look at that and follow up on that and have some information at the public hearing to be able to support that a little better.
I'm just curious, so it's definitely not anything that you should lose sleep over.
Okay, well, as long as you told me to.
All right, does anybody else have anything else? Or, or Nick, you have more to present on this?
No, no, really, really the lion's share of the decision-making and the planning is, is done for the CIP. And so we just update this according to how projects fall on the streets portion of the CIP.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Yes, what are bicycle facilities, like North Squim Avenue Bicycle, item number 26? And I think there was another, what would that consist of?
Typically, those just consist of enhanced bike lanes. So whether a portion of street needs to be restriped or widened for bike lane access, the bicycle facilities typically are, are those bike lanes that you see around town.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? So what we are looking to do tonight is to direct staff to schedule a public hearing to bring this transportation, transportation improvement program at the next Planning Commission meeting to receive public comment. That's what the motion we're looking for tonight. If anybody doesn't have any thing else they wanted to see different or add or questions on anything.
I'd like to make the motion.
Thank you.
I move to direct staff to schedule a public hearing for the 2025-2030 Transportation Improvement Program at the next Planning Commission meeting to receive public comment prior to making a recommendation to the City Council.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And opposed, so passes. Thanks, Nick.
And to Commissioner Kuntz and, and Fain, if there's a preference based on, you know, the live performance over the recording, that, you know, for next year, if, if you guys are still, still on board, more, more than happy to, you know, take recommendations on, on how to critique and best present to you guys for, for understanding, so.
I think you did great. I think you did great.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to change it up a little bit, see if maybe the, the generates a little bit more questions or understanding. Because I, again, I felt a little lost trying to record and, and manage the time in that way.
I was just giving you a hard time because Emily had, had called me and asked me, do you think that, that Nick should do a voiceover or should he do in person? And I said, well, I, I think we want to ask questions. So that's the only reason why I was giving you a hard time.
Yeah.
I, I think it's great to have you in person. So we can appreciate the, the big job you're doing. And it, it makes it all more understandable and, and makes us all see what a team the, the city has and, and these incredible projects going on simultaneously. It's quite a wonder for a city of just 8,500 or so.
Yeah, sorry. Well, thank, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You said Amy did a lot of the heavy lifting on this?
She did. Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll make sure that she give her a, a, you know, kudos for it. Because that was, that was very, very in-depth and informative. So that was a lot of work.
Yeah.
I, I think we're all kind of COVID dreary from not seeing faces. So it's good to see faces appear again.
Cool, absolutely. Well, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, that's all we have on our, under our new business. So now we are going to move on to the Director's Report, which it looks like we'll have Matt for that.
Or the standing pseudo-director. The lame city manager report. So a couple of things before I jump into a, a couple of items here. I just can't say enough, you all have addressed it and I really appreciate your appreciation for the work that you just saw. I mean, I'm just so impressed with the subject matter expertise. And Amy just barely left and I'm sorry she didn't hear you call her name out. But this is the staff I get to work with and I'm just overwhelmed with the, you know, the amazing skills and time and effort and expertise that we have. So we, I, just so you know what happens to the CIP, is we share that around a lot. So I just did a State of the City presentation, only because Port Townsend, Port Angeles, the city manager does that every year and kind of forces me into doing it. But it, it is a great opportunity for me to kind of give an overview to City Councils, the Planning Commission and to other organizations around town on what we're doing. And most of what we're doing is that CIP. And, and it's, I think it's super impressive to folks what it takes to run a city and that we're here as a city to address sidewalks and sewers and, and all of these things that you just heard about, right? It's the pump stations, it's the wells, it's the, that's what a city is about. And I, so it's, it's been great to remind the community about that we've got a great city because we're paying attention to these things. I think also it's been helpful. I went through, we organized a slide such that, for the State of the City, where we talked about the stability and the integrity of our finance department, that we, all of our reserves are at or above the, the mandatory reserves that we've passed every audit in the last three years without recommendations, et cetera, et cetera. So we're really fiscally sound and take that seriously. But that doesn't mean we're super flush and can just do whatever we want. Because all these things, you know, half of these $106 million projects are unfunded. And so we got to go find the money to do that. So, so even though our, we manage our money well, we still need to find money and whatnot. So I, a lot of people think, well, Squim's rich and they, you know, let's just go ask them for money and whatever. So it's, it's an interesting thing. I'm glad that you participate and care about this as well. So I, I use their work in a lot of different ways and I think it's great for the community. So, thank you. So I did want to recognize, of course, Sarah is our Public Works Director, unfortunately, for another, you know, short time, a couple of months here, and then she'll be retiring. We've tried, I know, boo boo, we've tried everything to keep her here. She was gracious enough to even accept the assignment, not being an engineer and not having done director role before, but has, you know, hit the ball out of the ballpark and has put together an amazing team. And, and we have worked on a succession plan around her. She's been gracious enough to tell us in enough time and to be very open to that. And so I would like to introduce you to the next Public Works Director who's here today. And maybe you've met him before, Paul Bucic is here. So Paul comes to us and Paul, I don't know, maybe you can take this stand and just give him a minute or two kind of brief overview. If, I know it's late, so maybe just kind of critique your 35 years of public service. But we, we found him in Lakewood and he was going to, he had some property up here and friends up here and was going to come here after retirement. But once we connected him and he saw what a great city this was, he thought this would be a great place to work before he retired. So we're lucky enough to have had him for about four days now.
Yeah, day number four. So I know everything that's going on in the city already. But thank you and it's a pleasure meeting all of you and watching the procedures tonight. I want to say that I was very pleased with the way the information was presented and received by you on both the capital facilities planning as well as the tip going forward. A little bit of background on myself, it's after eight o'clock. I'm going to make this really short. I've got 38 years of experience working in engineering, about 34 years, 35 years of that on the public sector side and sometime on the private sector side as a consultant. So I've tried both sides of it. My heart and soul are on the public sector side because I like being able to represent the community and help people solve problems. That's, that's what drives me. Really excited to see the job come open here in Squim. I have been telling my wife for a couple of years that if, if a job came open out here, that I was going to go after it because this is where we want to live in our retiring years in a few years. So I was very excited to be given the opportunity. I'm really looking forward to working with the great team in Public Works and all the things that we do here. So thank you.
Thank you very much and welcome.
And you all should know that anytime we, we've got new counselors too, city counselors, but the invitation is always there to get to know any of the staff better, to just feel welcome to let, you know, let Emily know or whatever. We can easily schedule one-on-one time to, you know, get to know these people better. Or we can do some, some time in, with the meals or however, whatever you want to do to make it an efficient process. So with that announcement, I'm sure you're wondering how long do we have to listen to the city manager to, in sitting in for a director? We had that, we've had that position open from the minute that we received the resignation, unfortunately, from Charisse. And it was going to be open until filled. We have had 21 applicants for that and we've interviewed many and even gotten semi-close with some offer negotiations, whatnot. But I am pleased to report that as of today, after the third interview, we now have an applicant that's accepted the position. So you will have a new director reporting to you. She comes and I'll, I'll save the resume and forward it to you and you'll be meeting her in the next meeting. But she comes with 17 years of experience in planning and loves planning. So she's not above, you know, kind of getting her fingernails dirty and looks forward to that. So I'll, I'll save that, but she's used to cities our size and she, like Paul, has been on the private side a little bit and as well, and mostly on the public side, but Gig Harbor, Puyallup, Lincoln City, et cetera. So anyway, I thought that would be great news. My staff doesn't even know that. That happened about five o'clock today, so. Yeah, so her name's Lindsay Schmel, S-C-H-M-E-L. So, yeah, did you even know that? Yeah, I know, it's brand new. So I hope that's great news for you. And she's going to move here and she's, her, one of the, I guess, the real positive attributes was she likes to embed herself in the community and be fully integrated in it. And, and, and will move here and plan this long-term, a long-term tenure. So just so you know, I know we all need that, right? I think this will be our fourth since I've been here two and a half years. So really excited about that. Okay, so getting to my thing, kind of my Director's Report here. I did want you to know that, of course, we're in the middle of the comp plan. And if you, I don't know if you want to show that task on timelines, you might throw that up. We have, without a director, all of the responsibilities for that department have been kind of divvied up. Sarah has picked up a lot of it with Public Works. Our city attorney, Christina's picked up different parts of that and then I've picked up some of that. So we've kind of divvied up that director role in three ways. And I picked up the comp plan piece and so I've had several meetings with CS, SCJ. I think you guys have met William or Bill and, and Aaron. Anyway, and we've had a call as recently as just a day or two ago. So I have asked for a task and timeline. This is, I think their first iteration of that. They had one much more complicated than that in a software program that was hard to understand. I've asked them for a simple one so that you could see kind of where they are in the process. As you know, this is an 18-month process and so it's nice to know what, what has to be accomplished during that 18 months and where are we in the accomplishment of those things. So we, we will continue to fine tune this. We just received this today. But it does have a, a column there for Planning Commission. You can kind of see if, if your box is checked and when and what you might be doing or be asked to do. So again, we're fine tuning this a little bit. I think we need to be able to query it by a date and whatnot. It's broken out by task or category. So very useful, but just know that my report tonight is on the comp plan, that we are on, directly on task of, and on timeline. We, we haven't missed anything with the director being absent. So that's a good thing. I'll, I'll share a couple more things about, from the, from our comp plan vendor right now as well. One of the things you'll, you'll see on that is their responsibility to a critical areas ordinance update. So they have taken our critical areas ordinance, they have a really thorough checklist and have gone through our ordinance with this checklist. And their comment back to me was the checklist identified mostly minor updates in language that they needed to make some minor edits for to, to bring consistency with the state law. So it's very close. They will be submitting a draft of those updates to the city by the end of May. So in the next week or so, and it talks a little bit about some things that it will be including. And then a revised draft of the critical areas ordinance will be delivered to Commerce as a part of the grant by the end of June. So that's a big thing that they've accomplished recently. You'll remember that part of their engagement or the comp plan overview is to meet with key stakeholders in the community. So we gave them a list of 40 key stakeholders. 25 of them agreed to meet with them. And so they had at least two days of back-to-back, they had two conference rooms going upstairs. I think 30 minutes, back-to-back interviews for two or three days. Anyway, the, so 25 more interviewed in March. They gathered insights from these community leaders and, and what, what the leaders thought were issues and opportunities. That full report is relative, about the interviews is available. It's going to be placed on the city website soon. We just got it ourselves. And so that's, that's another part of this task and timelines. A key part of this task and timelines is we're into the phase of public participation. So that's about a two-month, I believe, engagement with it starting, can you jump to the flyer? So the engagement, the engagement with the public is critical. We have what's called a studio. They, they call it a studio. This is an example. We still need to do some edits to this flyer. We can, we'll send you out, you know, there's things that the fonts aren't easy to read and we need to resize some things. But the, the concept is can you make that a little smaller? But you, you can see the dates there. Though, the, the information is accurate. I just don't, I just wanted to read easier for our residents. But it is June 11th through the 13th and it will be at Guy Cole. And it's open to the public, of course. It has the hours that is open and what will happen there. You can see the presentations in the evenings during those three days. Staff will be available, the consultants will be available and what will happen at each of those sessions is, is listed there. So you're encouraged to participate. We plan on sending you electronic copy of this so that you can forward that out to your own network. your own network, and we can give you hard copies and if you'd like those as well. But we really appreciate your support. The same electronic flyer will be provided to the 25 people that were interviewed so that they can, they can forward it out as well, so.
Yeah, we're, this should be finalized this week. We are definitely going to bring up the font thing, but yeah, this is just a draft. But once it's finalized, we'll get it out to y'all.
Yes. And so other than that, I could go into some other details that they've given me, but it's, it's basically a communication plan, there's an email invitation plan to get the message out to the interview list and to the community. I will be putting a city manager kind of letter on top of a mess, the message from the consultants, et cetera. We've got a whole social media rollout or campaign around this public engagement or this window for public engagement, and it'll be in the newsletter, and et cetera, et cetera. So I think that's mostly what I, I wanted to share with you today. We will, we have committed, and again, I know you guys have carried a lot of the burden, and I apologize, we all have, and but particularly the planning commission works very closely with the DCD department and with the director there. Kim has been phenomenal, I think I've attended all of your meetings, I mostly come to listen to her presentation, I've never heard anything so complex presented so simplicity, simply, and clearly very articulate, so I've, I've loved that. We will continue using her as much as possible, so you'll, we'll still having, you know, access to her going forward until we finish some of these things or whatever, and as the new director gets her feet underneath her. So just, just know that that's super important to us. And I think that was everything. I was going to recognize Nicole, who is our new city, city counselor who was appointed due to the opening. I think she's the liaison with this group now, and so depending on, you know, you've had different liaisons from the council, some attend, some don't, some watch it from home, some read the minutes, but she's your point person going forward, and we'll see what level of engagement she has. Other than that, I know it's late, do you have anything, Emily? If I, I told you to catch, catch anything I forgot.
Yeah, the only thing I have is the planning calendar, I did add the RV park protections on there, so we can bring that up at a later meeting, Alex. But everything else is pretty much being addressed that's on here. There's a couple things, but it's still on my mind all the time. So you can email me anytime and I can add it, it doesn't have to be at a meeting, so.
Okay, thanks. I have a request, if it's possible. Are we able to get the slideshows on these screens right here during our meetings?
You can join the meeting, and then it can.
And it'll come up here?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Because sometimes it's a little hard to.
Oh, for sure. Yep.
Okay.
And I think city council does do that. When we have presentations, they often just are looking straight at their devices in front of them, so that, that works.
Okay, no, I mean like these screens here.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Yeah, we can, we can show you how to do that.
Okay, because sometimes with our packets, you know, with them being, you know, 200 and something pages, sometimes it's easier just to be able to scroll on our Chromebooks, but then I still want to follow the PowerPoint. That's all I really got. Anybody have anything else for good of the order? No? Okay. This was a, this was a doozy, you better tell our new DCD director to buckle up, because this is the longest. The next one's gonna be, gonna be long too.
No.
So, all right, so 8:24, we'll adjourn.